We're going live.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Jeff Henshaw, are you hearing us, or can you speak to us, or what?
I can. We should be all set.
Okay.
You see the go-live, Jeff?
I just say we're live at the top of the screen.
Yeah, and Lori, we're live on Facebook, so we're good. Okay, we're gonna begin this meeting. Good evening, everyone. We are going to begin tonight with a reading of the orders from the governor and a vote to determine that it is okay with all of you to hold this meeting electronically. This is January 19th, 2021. This should be the regular meeting of the Gallatin City Council. The order says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16 and subsequent orders, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. The January 19th, 2021 Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and the citizens of Gallatin. You can join the Zoom meeting at the link that you see there on your screen. You can also find that link on the City of Gallatin Facebook page under the events section, also on the City of Gallatin website. You can join the meeting also by phone by calling 470-381-2552, or 470-250-9358. If you do join by phone, you have to enter a webinar ID. That webinar ID is seen on your screen. It's 821-291-02813. This meeting is also live on Facebook, on our Gallatin City website, and cable channel 19. However, if you wish to participate in the meeting, you need to do so via Zoom, either through computer or through the telephone. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Approve.
Second.
Of a motion from Councilman Overton to hold the meeting electronically, seconded by Councilman Alexander. Is there any questions or any discussion? Okay, I'm gonna ask Ms. Kettrell to do dual duty here and call the roll and vote on this.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Present, yes.
Councilman Fan?
Here, and yes.
Councilwoman George?
Here, and yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Here, and yes.
Councilman Overton?
Present, and yes.
Mayor, we have a quorum, and we also have a seven to zero vote.
Thank you so much. So the meeting is now called to order, and we're going to begin the meeting as we do each meeting with the indication. And this week, Nick Tuttle, who is our city engineer, is going to pray for us. Please bow.
Father, we come to you this evening, and as usual, we enter your courts with Thanksgiving. We're very thankful for your provision for us, for your blessings on us, for your favor. And Lord, tonight, as we gather to discuss more business for the city and citizens, Father, I pray that you would continue to provide wisdom and guidance, that we would heed those words of wisdom and guidance, and that we would continue to follow after your path and your way. We thank you for all this, and it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, thank you, Mr. Tuttle. We've called the roll. We're gonna move on to the approval of the minutes. You have the December 15th, 2020 special called City Council Meeting Minutes, and the January 5th, 2021 City Council Meeting Minutes. I'm sorry.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Fennell to approve both sets of minutes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And I would ask if there are any corrections or additions requested. Okay, seeing no one indicating that they have any, I'll ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll for the approval of the minutes.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, we have a seven-zero vote.
Thank you very much. The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is public recognition on agenda-related items. At this time, I'd like to make the public and the council aware of an agenda change that we do need to make. I guess I would ask for this council to approve this change without objection. May I do that, Ms. Hamacali? Okay, so what we need to do is item number three is listed on your agenda as a second reading. This is actually supposed to be a public hearing. So what we will do is we'll have two public hearings at the beginning of the meeting. For the public's information, you can comment at this time during public recognition on anything that's on the agenda, but you need to know that there are also two public hearings on the agenda for this evening. The first one will be the amendment to the City of Gallatin Urban Growth Boundary. That's one of the public hearings. What I'm saying is going to be the second one is actually going to be a public hearing on amending Article 12 supplementary district regulations specific to fences, walls, and hedges. So if you'd like to speak to either of those items tonight, you might wait till item number one or item number two, which are going to be those two public hearings. I will ask the council at this time, do you have any objection to making that correct change to the agenda?
No.
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 Okay, everyone looks fine with it, so we will move forward with doing that. And at this time, we will open public recognition on agenda-related items. If you're calling in, you're going to hit star nine to raise your hand and indicate that you wish to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items. If you are joining by computer, there is actually a raise your hand function on the screen. If you hover over it with your cursor, you can click that, and it will show a raise your hand icon by your name on the screen. Also want you to know that there is a time at the end of the meeting for public recognition on items that are not on the agenda. So if there's something that you want to speak to that's not on this evening's agenda, you actually have an opportunity to do that at the end of the meeting. So right now, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Henshaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Now is the time to use the raise your hand function. Look at our attendees and both of our panelists. Make sure we don't have any names. Okay, does appear anyone would like to speak?
Okay, we see no one indicating that they wish to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items, so I'll move along to Mayor's comments. I have two very quick things. First, I wanna welcome Mr. David Kellogg. Kind of his first official full day on the job as superintendent of Gallatin Public Utilities. So welcome, David. We look forward to working with you and know that you will do a fabulous job. How's it been so far?
It's been good. It's been a Monday after a holiday, or Tuesday after a holiday weekend. It's been good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, you're very welcome. And for the public who may not know, David is new in this world, but he is certainly not new to the City of Gallatin or Gallatin Public Utilities. I think 30 years there, right? And on he moves in this new role, and we know he will do well. Secondly, I would like to acknowledge the event that took place yesterday, which was the Martin Luther King Jr. Unity Day Parade. This is organized each year by the NAACP. This has been going on for decades in our community. It's very unique that a city our size has an event of this magnitude. This year had some modifications, as you might imagine, due to COVID. What is typically a foot parade became a car parade, and the program was not delivered in an auditorium, but rather in a parking lot via a radio station with speakers. They're actually speaking to the crowd. The crowd could see the speakers, but they were actually listening to them over their radio. It was done very, very well, and the attendance was good. And it was a really great day and a really great event that NAACP of Sumner County works to perpetuate in our community. So I want to thank the organizers, the participants, and the volunteers who helped make that happen yesterday. And that would conclude Mayor's comments for this evening, and we're gonna move now to the agenda. The first item is public hearing on resolution R2101-3. And for that, Councilman Overton will introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution adopting, recommending the Sumner County Coordinated Committee an amendment to the City of Gallatin Urban Growth Boundaries for Sumner County ratified by the City of Gallatin pursuant to the public charter 1101, Act of 1998, and this is a public hearing.
So the public hearing on resolution R2101-3 is now open. This will be just like public comment. If you are on your phone and wish to raise your hand, you will hit star nine. If you're on the computer, you will hover over the raise your hand function, click it, and it will show on the screen that you have raised your hand and wish to speak.
Mayor, it looks like we do have Michelle would like to speak.
Okay, and we ask that when you speak that you introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
This is Michelle Juvance, 1335 Long Call of Pike. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. I wanted to speak on the urban growth boundary change. Just in talking to a friend of mine who's in the property, she has property over in Yokona area, and apparently several of her neighbors as well in that area don't want their properties in the urban growth boundary for Gallatin. So I just wanted to speak in opposition to adding in their properties, the people who are opposed to being in the urban growth boundary. And I'll tell you why. Right now, to be annexed into the city, a property owner needs to request it, which wasn't always the case. For example, my property, as you all know, was annexed by ordinance along with all of my neighbors and all of the people who were opposed to being annexed into the city at that time. Right now, there are people at the state level that are trying to change the state law to change things back so that property can be annexed by ordinance again. I don't think that it's right to do that, to annex property against people's will, because when you're doing that, you're taking country people who just wanna live their happy lives and have horses and cows and mind their own business, and you're imposing city life on them. You're imposing things like, like what's gonna happen in our backyard with a road that's gonna have streetlights, and that's not something that we ever wanted. So when you impose things on people, it's just not, it's just not right. And here, there are people that don't wanna be added into the urban growth boundary, because in the future, if that law gets changed, they can be annexed against their will into the city, and that's something that I don't think they should have holding over their heads. Just because Anthony Holt wants to have the school annexed into the city doesn't mean that their properties also need to be put into the urban growth boundary. I think that there could be a nice compromise made where the school property could be put into the urban growth boundary, but these people whose properties are being included in that swath of land, like just, you know, draw the line so that their properties are not included. It's something that could easily be done. I think that might be something that would be possible, and I mean, if you think about it, if you annex in a bunch of people in the future that are opposed to being annexed. And the reason I'm saying that is because I did kinda skim through the report, and on page 52 of the report about this, it does say that if it becomes available again, where annexation by ordinance is a possibility, that that's something that the city would think of doing, would be to annex in already developed properties by ordinance. So, yeah, so that's all. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Juvance. As to no one else indicating that they wish to speak, so with that, we will declare the public hearing on resolution R2101-3 concluded, and move on to item two, which is going to be the public hearing on ordinance 02012-53. And Vice Mayor Fennell, you will introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public reading, repeat a public reading, and this is for Article 12, Section 12.01 Regulations. I pull for the District Regulation Section 12.01.02, all fences, walls, and hedges of the City of Gallatin zoning ordinances. This is repealing conflicting ordinances of proper severability. Now, I wanna make an amendment to this right here, if we can do that. For the public hearing, excuse me? I don't think we'll make a amendment to a public hearing, David, Susan.
No, it's just a public hearing.
Well, one thing that I'd like to say is that on the residential side, as far as the six-foot fences are still, that's okay. On the first part of it, if you read, but if you go down to the second part and read of it, on seven-foot or taller, if it's commercial property or residential property, and where the commercial meets, the commercial and multifamily meets the residential, then they can put a seven-foot fence or taller fence, but they still have to go through the building and the codes and get a, obtain a building permit for that. And this is a public hearing.
Okay, so this is public hearing on ordinance 02012-53. And again, you will raise your hand on your phone by being star nine. And if you're on the computer, hover over the raise your hand, and it will illuminate by your name on the screen if you would like to speak in this public hearing.
We do have someone that's raised their hand. Ben Appleton?
Right. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I live on Harden Street at the corner of Berry and Harden. And I think it's wonderful that Nathan has taken the lead in all of this, because our neighborhood is very, very concerned about this traffic situation on Airport Road in Cairo. We were there, Charlie and I, my husband Charlie Appleton.
Ms. Appleton? Ms. Appleton, I have to interrupt you. I'm sorry. This is the public hearing about an ordinance related to fences.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was in the other room. I thought you were talking. I'm so sorry. I thought you were talking.
Your comments, your comments will be appropriate at the very end of the meeting. We'll have public recognition on non-related items.
I apologize. I was on another line and just came in and said, raise your hand, and I did it.
I understand, and I hate to interrupt you, but trying to.
Oh, no. I may come back in later.
That would be fun. Thank you. Now you know how to do it, so we'll see you in a little bit.
Yes, I do. Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's anyone else wishing to speak, please raise your hand now in this public hearing. Okay, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so we're going to declare public hearing on ordinance 02012-53 closed. We will now move to what has become item number three on the agenda, which is resolution R201-3. And for that, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution adopting, recommended to the Sumner County Coordinated Committee an amendment to the City of Gallatin Urban Growth Boundaries of Sumner County ratified by the City of Gallatin pursuant to public charter 1101, Act of 1998, and I so move.
Have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander that opens the floor for discussion. Anyone wish to discuss any further? Well, for the public's information, you know, this is something that's been discussed over the period of several months. We're not all in agreement on this, but I think the council directed the planning department on how to move forward. Planning Department has done such. And this now moves to, with this vote, will move to the county coordinating committee, and they will review this. And does it come back to us for another vote after that, Ms. Hamacali? Or do you know?
I can answer that.
Mr. Court, okay, go right ahead.
Yes, ma'am. After the coordinating committee finishes their review, they may make some suggestions or recommendations for changes from not only Gallatin, but the other communities, and then they will essentially send that or transmit their recommendation back to each of the local governments for formal adoption. And assuming that the local governments do agree to that, that would be sent to the local government planning advisory committee. If they don't agree, then I believe it goes to some sort of mediation or arbitration process, and that gets more complicated, so.
Yeah, and ultimately, then, so we approve it again before it goes to the LG pack?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that lovely explanation. Any questions from any members of this council? Are you ready to move forward to a vote? Okay, this is resolution R2101-3, and Ms. Kettrell, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George? Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i's, zero nays.
Okay, resolution R2101-3 does pass unanimously. Item number four is second reading on ordinance 02012-55, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $52,264 for the use and benefit of the City of Gallatin in support of the Town Creek Tributary Watershed Study. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this?
I thought that it was already supposed to start on the S. Is this in the Triple Creek area, or is this pertaining to pretty much all of Gallatin where it runs out through the center of Gallatin?
Town Creek.
Mr. Tuttle, you wanna go back through it?
I got you.
Yes, ma'am. I'd be happy to. This is Nick Tuttle, city engineer. And these funds are actually from the development, and the developer of the Winsome Development. And so this is a particular watershed study that they're contributing money to that we're gonna move forward with these funds. So it's all going into the Hellwood Estates development, the existing subdivision. That's what we're gonna be studying.
Okay, I remember now. Thank you.
You remember the $100,000 that they committed to help mitigate the flooding in that neighborhood? So this is gonna be a piece of that. Certainly, it's going to likely use the rest of their money and ultimately will depend on the City of Gallatin doing, I'm sure, more in additional projects in that neighborhood.
Am I right in saying, though, that the Triple Creek area, that is already supposed to be underway here in the near future?
It's in process. We haven't, we haven't determined exactly how everything is going to happen at this point.
The Corps of Engineers is spearheading that actual study there. Actually, they're working on the design plans right now. So we have already given a lot of funding to it, but there's still some more funding that will be needed from us in the future, and we should be able to handle all the needed funding from our stormwater utility.
The reason why I ask is because when I read up on it, I was thinking that the Town Creek actually was benefiting also from the Triple Creek development.
That is true.
Okay.
That's true.
That's why I asked that question.
This particular study that we're talking about tonight is another tributary that goes into Town Creek.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
Yes, sir.
At what point do we consider Town Creek starting from the north?
That's a good question, Nick. Do you know?
I would be better off using a map to show you that, but I can get you a picture.
Is it like near Liberty Creek, or?
I actually don't remember if it, I think it actually tails off and follows 31E out towards Airport Road, and that particular branch of where the creeks come together is called Town Creek.
Okay.
So we were actually talking about that, the grading activity near the intersection of Airport Road and 31E. There's a small stream that runs between that grading activity and Highway 31E.
I just know there's a lot of activity out in front of my business on 318, and it looks like they're studying for something. I was assessing it to part of that.
But what approximately starts there around Airport Road?
I think that's the branch that's considered the main branch where the Triple Creek, where we're talking about in the park, that's where three branches come together, and you really have what we would consider Town Creek being formed. But I believe the main branch of the three, the one that forks off almost directly to the east there, the intersection of 31 and Airport Road.
Okay.
Anyone else with questions or discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02012-55. Ms. Kettrell, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Hayes? Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i's, zero nays.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Sorry, I've got playing back to me, too. Okay, so it passes unanimously. Item number five is first reading on ordinance 02101-1. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriated funds for the completion of infrastructure improvements in the Home Depot subdivision, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? Okay, this is second, sorry, first reading on ordinance 02101-1. And Ms. Kettrell will call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. It passes unanimously. Item number six is resolution R2101-1. Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign contract 720, 2020 with Infinity Pipeline. I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? This is resolution R2101-1. Ms. Kettrell?
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you. Resolution R2101-1 is passed unanimously. Item number seven is resolution R2101-2. Councilwoman George?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign contract 820, 2020 with Cleary Construction Incorporated. I so move.
Second.
The motion by Councilwoman Love is second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
That was Councilwoman George, Mayor.
Did I say Love?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That was the first one.
And I'm sitting here looking at her name when I said that. I just have never said another name after Councilwoman, so I apologize, Councilwoman George. I'll get it right now. So this is resolution R2101-2. Ms. Kettrell, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George? Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i zero nays.
Thank you. Resolution R two one zero one presented by Council, dash two, presented by Councilwoman George, passes unanimously. Item number eight is Resolution R two one zero one dash five, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is a resolution reappointing Lynn Asante to the Gallatin Industrial Development Board. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Okay, this is Resolution R two one zero one dash five. Ms. Kitchell, for the roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i zero nays.
Thank you. Item eight, Resolution R two one zero one dash five, passes unanimously. Item nine is Resolution R two one zero one dash six, Vice Mayor Fennell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution reappointing Larry Weiss to the Gallatin Industrial Development Board. With that, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilman Fan. Was that you?
Yes.
I did, somebody asked it, too.
Okay, all right, a second by Councilman Fan. Any discussion? This is Resolution R two one zero one dash six, and Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i zero nays.
Thank you so much. It passes unanimously. Congratulations to Mr. Weiss and Mr. Asante for their reappointments to the Gallatin Industrial Development Board. Item ten is Resolution R two one zero one dash seven, and Councilwoman Love.
Thanks, Paige. This is a resolution reappointing Lynn Asante to the Gallatin Health Educational Housing and Facilities Board. So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Fan. Any discussion? Okay, this is Resolution R two one zero one dash seven, and Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for the vote?
Vice Mayor.
Sorry, I, I said Councilman. You know why? Because it still says it on the screen. I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Fennell? Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i zero nays.
Thank you. Resolution R two one zero one dash seven passes unanimously. Item eleven is Resolution R two one zero one dash eight, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution reappointing Larry Weiss to the Gallatin Health Educational Housing and Facility Board, and I so move.
A second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman George. And any discussion on this? Okay, this is Resolution R two one zero one dash eight, and Ms. Kitchell for the roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven i zero nays.
It passes unanimously. Our thanks and congratulations to Larry Weiss and Lynn Asante for their reappointments to the Health Educational Housing and Facilities Board. Moving on to item number twelve, we have Resolution R two one zero one dash nine, Councilman Fan.
This is a rela- resolution approving an indemnity and hold harmless agreement with a certificate of liability insurance to use city maintained right of way once constructed and accepted by the city of Duval, Drive, Beck's Place, and Spiraling Drive in the Cumberland Point subdivision for the installation and maintenance of street trees, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fan, I think it was second by Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any discussion on this from anyone? Okay, this is Resolution R two one zero one dash nine, and Ms. Kitchell will call the roll, so you may vote.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i zero nays.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchell. It passes unanimously. And item number thirteen is Resolution R two one zero one dash ten, and Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution appointing Beth Bennett to the Gallatin Electric Power Board. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Vice Mayor Fennell. It got changed on the screen. Your na- your title did. Whoever did that, thank you. Um, opening the floor for any discussion? Seeing none, this is Resolution R two one zero one dash ten. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for the vote?
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i zero nays.
Thank you so much. Resolution passes unanimously. Congratulations. And my thanks to Beth Bennett for her willingness to serve on the Gallatin Electric Power Board. That concludes the regular agenda. It moves us now to other business. I would ask of this council if there is any other, other business to come before the board this evening and we'll consider. Anyone with anything?
Nope.
All right, I see no one indicating that they have anything to bring forward. So we will move now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you may speak to anything that's not on the agenda. You just raise your hand. Reminder, if you're on the phone, you do that by pressing star nine. If you're on the computer, you use your cursor to hover over the hand, and it will eliminate a raised hand by your name on the screen. So right now, public recognition on non-agenda-related items is now open.
Okay, Michelle's back. Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, I just wanted to give you an update on the intersection of Long Hollow Pike and Harris Lane. I had sent you emails this week, and I didn't know if you received the emails. I, I got a reply back from Councilman Fan, but I didn't know if anyone else had gotten the pictures I sent. And then also, I know Pascal sent pictures to Nick Tuttle. Um, so, yeah, that, I mean, the guardrails still knocked down. We still have, you know, the same problem there. So just wanted to see what you were planning to do about that. I know, um, we need to have that pork chop taken out and maybe replaced with a hot dog, right, Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, yeah, anyway, that, that was what I wanted to uh, bring to your attention here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Saunders, go ahead.
Hi, this is Renee Saunders, twenty ninety-two Rodman Boulevard. I saw a story on the news regarding, I think, First Baptist Church and the homeless cold weather shelter that they're providing. And I wanted to know, this is the first time I'd ever heard that we had such a thing. Of course, everyone has homeless people. But I was wondering what the City of Gallatin is doing in particular in support of the efforts that Ms., I believe her name was Alfred or Austin, um, is putting forth to help the homeless in Gallatin.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Ms. Appleton? Um, she was the lady. There's your hand. Did you want to speak at this time, too?
You can hear me now, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I was talking about the light that we were hoping to have at the corner of Cairo Road and Airport Road. Um, I think this has been brought up. Certainly Nathaniel Shell has been working diligently to try to bring all of this together and to the, you know, and to the attention of the council. Um, my husband and I were going out, uh, going down Airport Road, turning left from Cairo, you, you know, if you're looking at it that way. And we, we decided to go about four o'clock in the afternoon. We could not get across. He was looking one way, I was looking the other way. All the lanes were coming together at one time, and it was extremely dangerous. And of course, you've heard this before. Um, and it's been a problem for a long time with our neighbors and everyone else. So I know that you, there was something said about the state, the TB, some, you know, that they were handling um, all of these concerns wanting traffic light there. And I think all of you were in favor of having one, but the T, is it the TBA? Um, I'm not real familiar. But it appears that, you know, they haven't really taken a big interest in all of this, and that maybe your hands are tied. So those were the only remarks I wanted to make.
Thank you, Ms. Appleton. Anyone else with public comment on non-agenda-related items? I see no one. I'll, I'll just mention two things really quickly, Ms. Appleton. Um, I think you were speaking of T dot, and it's not that they don't have an interest. It's that there's a process that has to be, um, um, vetted, I guess. Several issues that have to be vetted before it can be determined whether a stoplight's the appropriate solution for that intersection. It's not just about traffic counts. It's got the engineering piece of it. The city is exploring that. Um, we have several pieces that have to come together, and then we would have to, um, you know, figure out what the best solutions are. And in some cases, we may have to, um, I don't know, um, there, uh, in theory here, suggest some, um, I can see a place whereby we would have more than one potential solution, and we would seek public input. So I don't know that the light is going to be the only solution, um, or if it is going to be a viable solution. But that's the reason we have to go through the, through the due diligence to see what those solutions are. So thank you for that. And Dr. Saunders, you mentioned about the homeless situation. The city has, um, I, I'm not gonna say a strict protocol, but we do have a kind of a protocol on how we support nonprofits in our community financially. And that is through an application process, through a grants process, um, as far as what the city does to help our homeless population. Our police department has been very proactive for a long time trying to help, um, people that they encounter who are homeless in, in whatever way might suit them best. Um, we have not, to my knowledge, had any requests specifically. I do think that there probably has been some outreach from the police department to that, um, specific ministry, but I couldn't speak authoritatively to that. I don't know if Chief Bandi's on here, if he knows anything that he would say about that. But, um, but, you know, so that all of our nonprofits are treated fairly. We do have the process through which we do that to our grant process.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, I did watch the, that information on the news the other night. And, uh, you know, I think it's a great thing that that church is doing. And I know there's several people, and John D. Alexander's one of them, that gives away some food baskets and stuff like that. But my, my question is, they made a comment, a news anchor did, that we had X amount of homeless people in Gallatin. Um, I guess maybe we do. I know we have some, and I'm out in Gallatin daily, every day. And, and when that number was brought up to me per the news comments, it, it was just hard for me to believe that there was actually that many people that was homeless in Gallatin. I just don't see it unless, how are we getting that number? How's that a factual number?
Well, I don't, I don't know what number was presented, and I don't know what a factual number would be. I mean, it's kind of hard to do a census of homeless people. I think they probably shared a number of people that were using their services. And, and so...
Because I think of homeless out in the street like you see in Nashville. I don't really see that. If I do, not that much in Gallatin, unless they're saying that people needs the, the help in living with somebody else, but they need the financial support of the groceries.
Well, now, remember, not all homeless people are people, you know, living on the streets. There are people living in cars. There are people living with other people. But I think that number was probably a number that the organization providing the services relayed. But I certainly appreciate you acknowledging the good works that others are doing in our community, too, because we do have a lot of people doing food drives. And we may have some other churches doing some homeless outreach. I don't know of any off the top of my head. I do know that we have a lot who are very active in, um, reaching people who are in recovery and, um, you know, uh, some very specialized programs with different churches. So I think that's so wonderful that we have so many active churches in our community. We probably have a, a very large number of churches per capita compared to a lot of other cities our size, and that serves our community well, because they are all able to, um, tap, if, tap into and aid different areas of need, and, and it makes a difference in our community. So I appreciate what they're doing.
And I believe I've heard that other churches are getting involved in helping with this, the Stay Safe Shelter.
Okay.
I think it was a great program that was presented that we could see the, the actual, um, reality of what's going on in all of our cities. Uh, Deborah Austin is a personal friend, and she has, uh, done a lot for, uh, uh, the, the church she's involved with, and also outreach to, uh, the homeless. Uh, they exist. I mean, behind Walmart and, and, you know, and, and cars and, and places that we just don't think about, because we really aren't driving the roads the time of day when they need to be housed. So that's definitely an issue. And I would like to hear from, um, uh, our chief of police, if he knows anything more than we don't know.
Yeah, yearly, we have a, and I can't think of the AUC, but they will send us a, uh, email yearly to go out and, and do our best, especially in the winter months. We're talking, maybe the first year, we'll probably get that notification to go out and see what we can find as far as homeless or anybody that, you know, again, living in cars or what it may be. Um, and again, every year, that, that number's, uh, not the same as what, what's been presented. Again, in a couple, I know that we've had a couple reports. So like the mayor said, I think that, um, they're probably counting the ones that are using your facility, uh, which is great, and, and we definitely need it. Unfortunately, we do need it, uh, this day and age. But, uh, overall, we, we have a few here and there, but I don't think it matches the number that's being, uh, used at, uh, when they use that facility.
And, and Chief, you might want to weigh in on this. I know that you and I have had discussions in the past, like when I've asked the police department to check on a particular person or something. Um, we find a lot of people that that have been at the mission in Nashville, and they decide to come to Gallatin to, you know, to see what services we have here. Um, so they're not people that are from our community that have lost their housing. They're people who, um, sadly are perpetually homeless and, and, and we've, we've taken them back to Nashville on several occasions. Um, what's been your, I mean, is your exposure, is that? I know that that's stuff you have shared with me in the past. I don't know if that's kind of consistent or not.
Well, absolutely. And again, I don't know if consistent would be the best word, but I know a recent incident where, uh, family, uh, I worked with some of the folks at the school board, and we were back and forth in some conversations. Uh, and at the end of the day, and again, this is nothing against anybody, they, they, uh, uh, I don't know when I say take advantage of the situation, but they were, uh, again, when we're trying to give them certain help, they, they seem to not want that certain help. So, uh, you know, uh, again, that's all we can do is offer. I know I worked, uh, you know, like I said, with the school board on that situation. Because anytime, especially with children, you want to make sure that they're, uh, taken care of, and they're, uh, you know, have a home and have, uh, a, a good shelter and food, and, and they're taken care of to make sure they can go to, go to, uh, class and, and learn something. So, uh, other than that, you know, again, there's bits and pieces, and usually if we find, if anybody brings our attention, we do our best to address it right away, because it's something that, uh, again, it's, it's an urgent matter, in my opinion, and that's our philosophy, the police department, and we're gonna do our best to, uh, provide for those citizens, just like we do the rest, so.
And, and one of the things that I'm most proud of, um, and this, a lot of the members of the council may not know this, but our police And one of the things that I'm most proud of, and this, a lot of the members of the council may not know this, but our police department has been successful with helping homeless people in our community connect with family members and send them to their home with their families, and that's, that's been nice when they've been able to do that, when there's actually somebody that they are related to that's willing to help them, and they say, come stay with me. So that's great.
Mayor, as you know, I'm associated with the, on a nonprofit low income daycare here, and, you know, we've had several, several homeless kids and families involved with that, but I have to say Gallatin is one of the best ever, because anytime we reach out to our associations, whether it's a police chief or anybody else, they all step up to help us, and we've had several over the last few years, especially, but we have a lot of resources here in Gallatin, and they do a fantastic job of helping us find places and find resources for these families. So hats off to all of them that gets involved in this, and their story was right. I don't think the numbers are quite there where she said there was. I think, there again, somebody said it's the resources they've had people they helped. But, but we're lucky to live in a city that does take care of them and has the resources to help, so.
Well, and we got, no city, I think, has enough resources, you know. Homelessness is is a problem that, you know, we've certainly seen more of in recent years, and will likely see more of in the years to come, and and so there have to be some better solutions that none of us have discovered in our brains yet, and I love and respect the people who that is their passion, and I know that is certainly this lady's passion, because I've only talked to her a few times, but oh my goodness, she's passionate about, and she's made a difference in a lot of lives.
Mayor, may I add something to that, please?
Absolutely.
Ms. Deborah Austin Barr, she's been working with homeless people for a number of years as far as trying to find them places to live and stuff. And I think what Ms. Sanders was referring to was not different organizations such as churches, but what is the city of Gallatin as a city doing to alleviate the homeless problem. I've been looking at some places myself that I would like to partner with someone, you know, we had a nursing home over on Pay Street, Swanson Nursing Home, that's been empty for a number of years. That would be a good place to maybe put some homeless people, but I'm sure that place have deteriorated over a period of time, and there was a place out on three eighty-six going out of town to the left at one time that was up and set, but I think what Ms. Sanders was referring to was what if any plans does the city have as a whole as far as addressing the number of homeless folks. Now, there's a lot of homeless folks that stay in cars, especially over here in the fifth district, and I know there's a camp out behind Walmart where a lot of homeless people go, so I'm just personally myself, just looking at different building that can, I know, I don't know what the liability would be for the city to open up a shelter, but that's something that I've been looking at and studying for quite a while.
Do we have a criteria, defensive criteria of what qualifies somebody to be homeless?
Yeah, I don't know if the police department has that, but just like Mr. Alexander said, and again, I say this, and I know everybody's got a big heart on here, but if you know somebody or you know somebody that's out there in a camp or in a car, we need to know about it. If we don't know about it, we can't do anything to get them the resources to help them. So it's everybody's duty, it's every citizen's job, do their very best to help those that are in need. So that's the point I want to get across.
Ms. Havacall, could I ask the city attorney a question? Is she on here?
Yes.
What would be the liability, say, for the city of Gallatin if we was to open a place like, say, for an example, Swanson Nursing Home or any kind of building with, you know, a lot of rooms and beds? I mean, how would you go by doing something like that as a city?
Well, that's something we would really have to research and spend some time on. I can't really address all of those issues with you tonight. It would definitely be liability for the city. We would have to partner with our insurance company and probably get additional insurance, and, you know, have not done that. I will do so if I'm directed to do so, but that would, that's something if we're going to go down that path, that we need to spend a lot of time, maybe in a work session or at some point, really talking about all the potential liability issues, because there are many.
Right, right, I understand, yeah.
The financial liability is the thing that I would be most concerned with.
Well.
Staffing it.
Certainly, I want to help everybody that's local and lives here, but I see the potential of people coming up from Nashville or somewhere else to see we have to offer. Next thing you know, we're having to foot that bill right there. You know, naturally, the residents, I want to help everybody if I can, but certainly the people from Gallatin. You know, if that could be done, but I don't, I don't want to be a calling card for Atlanta or Nashville or somebody like that. I think that could get out of hand.
I think that is a concern, Mr. Fennell, and also, I, you know, I don't know, I honestly don't know much about homeless accommodations in other cities. I do know that the Nashville Rescue Mission is not a government entity. It is a, it is a nonprofit, and and, you know, we had the Good Neighbor Mission here for a long time. It was a nonprofit. I'm just not sure that that is something that our government and our taxpayers really have the capacity to provide for at this time. Because that would be a substantial budgetary impact, I would think. But I'm open to suggestions, I'm open to, you know.
It would probably need to be worked through the churches and have a group of churches, if not all of them. But I see a lot of problems with opening one at this time.
Now, I do know that the NF Church, I think that's the name of it, in Gallatin, that they are going to have a very large missionary statement for the homeless, and they're actually going to be bringing in physicians and dentists to help. So I don't know exactly where it's going and when that's going to happen, but that's the direction that they're going in.
We actually have a flyer on my desk, Northfield Church, and what their, the vision for their ministry is. I'm hopeful that, I mean, I think more and more churches are kind of seeing how needs have shifted and where the opportunities are to serve, and you know, and like I said, the city's always willing to help, but I just don't know if we have the ability to to create exactly what's needed. But this is the first conversation, so. Thank you all for your thoughts and participation.
Gallatin cares.
Are you speaking of the organization or the fact that we do?
That did kind of come out.
Great resource, though. Another good resource, so, but thank you. I think, I think that is true, and certainly, amazingly, caring and devoted community members. Anyone else with other business? All right.
I'll say one more thing, what Sean brought up, local charity starts at home. So we need to look, if this were to progress, I think we need to look at the existing people here in this county.
Yeah, I mean, that's something, yeah, I agree with you, that we need to look into, but, you know, we do have buildings such as Stallone Zone got roomed down in the basement, if you will, a lower level that's not being utilized, but like I say, I know there's a lot of liability to the city. That's just something I've been studying, trying to look into. And I will give this, I see that turning on my head, just something I'm working on personally myself.
John, you got a huge compound yourself.
I know. But thanks, Sean, I appreciate that. There you may have a lot of people out in front of my house.
Well, thank you all. If there's no other business this evening, we are.
Motion adjourned.
We made it, John. I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you for the conversation, and hope to see everyone safely back here next week. Stay well, stay happy.
Bye y'all.
Bye. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Eat more chicken.